Mr. Mayor, member? Mr. Chandler, member?
Bob Gilger, member.
Three weight, member.
Mr. Chaskin, member?
Sanizikos, member?
Harvey Moll, Mr. John.
Wendy Rapp, Gabor Alvin.
We have some new guys covering quarters here. Can you introduce themselves to the board?
Don and Betty Lee were here to take minutes for Tina, who's somewhere in the room.
By the way.
Oh.
By the way.
Yep.
And...
And I'm Betty Lee. He's better off.
Okay. Thank you. Review and acceptance of the November 13 meeting minutes.
Terry, I just want you to know that I caught that before you could call or comment. Did you see that? I just want you to know, Terry. Thank you. You're welcome, Jerry. Anytime.
I have a comment. The committee reports review of zoning ordinance where it says the issues presented that need change involve the following areas. I think that need really should be something like should be reviewed. I don't think we concluded that they need change.
Anybody agree with that?
What are they?
Yeah, that's the conclusion that I don't think we really did.
Yeah. No. We continue.
That were reviewed.
No, the word need. I would think of the word need.
Issues presented that were reviewed involved...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you believe it's tough?
No, I just understood.
No. Oh, wow. He does. Where has he crashed?
Woo!
He can run always when it's good.
I've trained you to run.
It was probably part of one or five different little settings that I, you know, did it, did it, did it. It's a big report, yeah. But Kathy took great notes. Hey, Kathy!
He looks like he aced it.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting for November 13, 2013.
As amended.
As amended. Thank you.
A second.
A second. Confirmation, all approved, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kathy. Now, a little bit of public hearing that we've had for the last couple of months on the subdivision regulations proposed change. Is that within the... Bill, do you hear me?
Yes. I'm still struggling with this. I can't quite figure out. Originally brought it up, I think I misinterpreted what the situation was. It all started out with the comparison of the site plan requirements and the subdivision plan requirements because the developer said that, for the most part, 98% identical. And they are pretty close to being identical, and so we went down and noted the areas where there were some differences. And it came down to this area where in the subdivision regulations, it required, the way I originally read it, that proposed buildings be shown on the lots. And I thought that was rather restrictive because it called for the heights and the square footages and the exact plan, and proof knows what the building would be of that. So, thinking that it's more appropriate to be in the site plan review, I was thinking that we would loosen up the requirement in the subdivision regulations such that it wasn't, number one, repetitive, and, number two, a little bit too concise for a subdivision plan because they don't really know what the building's going to be like. But it was pointed out to me that probably I was looking at this wrong, and that would be only if the buildings were proposed at that time shown on the subdivision plan. Where I was thinking that they would have to show buildings that... So I was going to loosen up the requirements for showing that a lot be buildable by just putting in a shaded area. It was discussed, and it was determined that that might also be a little too precise because of open space and so forth. So it got a little complicated. And I started backing off and was going to make a statement or elaborate on the statement that the engineer was to write on the plan that these lots are, or that the land is suitable for development. And I was going to change that to say that these lots are considered buildable, so such that when a person buys a lot, they can assume that it's a buildable lot, and they don't get stuck having to go to the zoning board of adjustment because they find out afterwards they can't build a lot on it because of, excuse me, put a building on it because of wetlands or contours and so forth. But then it was pointed out to me that you could have a subdivided lot that was indeed not intended to be built on, such as open space or arc or something like that. So then it further complicates the issue. And so it isn't as simple as I would have originally thought. And I'm wondering if it's at all necessary to do anything with it at this particular point. Because as soon as you start getting into exceptions, then it complicates the matter again. If you would have had the engineer make a statement that says all lots in the subdivision are considered buildable lots with the exception of, and then have to show on the plan, and who knows, but at some point later on, the use might change, and maybe some combined lots or something. So up to this point, I guess, since it hasn't really been a major issue, in other words, I don't think it's come up too many times that I can recall. And the zoning board of adjustment doesn't seem to be overwhelmed with requests or hardships as a result of this, that perhaps we just leave it as it is and move on.
Do you suggest we withdraw?
My suggestion is that we just withdraw and leave it the way it is unless something comes up in the future where it becomes an issue.
I would agree with that because I think during a review of any application, the planning board has an opportunity to review those criteria.
Yeah, I think it's something that we should keep in mind. Perhaps we hadn't been doing it very much, at least I haven't in the past, looking at the lots carefully enough to determine whether they were buildable, just by going on the assumption that, of course, they were, but that is not the case. So I would suggest that perhaps I might require more than since we didn't...
No, we'll just... We could just stop.
I suggest we withdraw.
Take no action. Any comments from the... They'll close the public hearing on that, and we'll just withdraw this proposal. See, the next thing on the agenda is the core development plan. Now, I had already Chris Sununu in a tone, and he probably will get to it right away. So it's okay with Bill. Can we do the CIP?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah. Chris, I talked to Chris to confirm he was coming, and he said someone had told him nine o'clock, and he said he was going to try to be here by 8:30.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do the CIP.
So we can do the CIP and get that out of the way. Thank you, Bill.
You're going to crank the heat up?
Yeah, he is.
Well, yeah, just a couple. That's right.
There's someone coming downstairs.
So, here is the most recent iteration of the CIP. We have... The building committee has met and has unanimously approved or recommended moving forward with the Public Works Garage project. So that is the stage of the CIP document. You'll see that there's a number of $800,000 in there. The $800,000 is broken up, $164,200 that we already have authorized. That's in the other sources there at the bottom, under funding sources. And then the balance is in the bond bonding line. Okay? So the warrant article for that would raise and appropriate only the additional $200,000 in change. Okay? Not the $800,000. So when you see that on the warrant, that's why, because we don't want to reappropriate money that town meeting has already approved.
So it's other sources? Is that...
It's money that's already approved. I just wanted to show you where the funding was coming from. It's not money that we're raising again. It's already been done. Okay? We did make a couple of modifications. If you go back to the first page at the top under highways, we've moved the road resurfacing projects one year. In talking to Jim, the roads are really not the priority. The water and sewer projects are the priority right now. We ran into several issues as we started the meter pit installation in Windsor Hill. And we used all... We used up all of the wastewater system repairs and water system repair account, so we have to replenish those. That's the two $15,000 projects. It started to, when you looked at the cash portion of the CIP, it started to get out of whack, and that's why we moved the roads down one year so that we could refund those accounts. Comments from last time, moving the John Deere tractor one year, that's done. We have repaired the existing utility one, which is the pickup truck safety department, and that's allowed the fire vehicle to slip another couple of years. We're going to redo the body of the truck and make some repairs, get a couple of extra years out of the truck. So that has moved. These are all pretty minor changes. They're not impacting the overall plan all that much, just the years. Then if you go to the vehicle replacement there, plan is there for your information. If you go to the next to last page, it shows you the debt retirement plan with the garage included. 2014 will obviously be a big year. That is the rural development, water and sewer project loan portion, as well as the garage and the ambulance. So that's what makes up the $3,380,000. The following year, 2015, is the trash truck. That is not... That is money that's already, has already been approved. It is just waiting for us to purchase the truck, due to bond issue itself, but that was part of the overall recycling project that we did in 2011. The $380,000 is the... It is. The Corcoran's Pond repairs. Hopefully, we will never have to do that. We will keep pushing that out as long as we can. They're not repairs we want to make. It's in the plan so that if DES forces us to do it, then we have the money available. But we will not bond that $380,000 unless we absolutely have to.
That's the reinforcement?
Reinforcing of the dam. Yeah.
I thought there was a less expensive way.
That is, the expensive ways are a million to a million and a half. This is the less expensive way is around $400,000 to $500,000. So remember, we've been putting $10,000 into the capital reserve. We're going to bump that up to the number shown there for the next couple of years. That'll give us a total of about $500,000 by the time we get to the $380,000. We, again, will not, we'll just keep pushing that out as long as we can. And then Terry's favorite is mine. 2018 gets here, and we pay the piper, Terry.
Yep.
It's too bad.
Perhaps.
You have fun. Okay. He hasn't given in yet. But that, the $880,000 there is for the ladder truck, and then $300,000 for the sledge removal up at the lagoons. That $300,000 is another project that may slip further. We are using biological methods, little bugs eating the poop. And so the sledge levels are being well controlled, and this project is actually, you know, draining one of the lagoons and completely cleaning it out right down with a liner, and then doing the other one. We may not have to do this project. As long as the biologicals keep working, then we don't have to go through that. It's a very involved between the cleaning and the disposal of the material and everything else. You can see it's pretty expensive. So that's one that hopefully we won't have to do. And then, so hopefully that spike will go, and then the $1 million is the second phase of the town building project. That's a placeholder at this point, and we'll see how we deal with the EPW garage first. Any questions?
Underwater.
Yeah.
Does the line, it doesn't have any value.
Mm-hmm.
Really hill booster station, is that something that exists, or is that something that's planned, or...
That is something that when we finish the water modeling as part of our rural development project, we're going to do, you know, once we get the new systems in with the new well and all that, we're going to do a computer model of the system, find out where we might have places where we can improve pressures. The booster station is one thing that the engineers think is a possibility of having to install, but that will depend on the water model.
It's in order to meet some sort of regulation or something?
Well, for water pressures, yes.
Like the fire hydrants?
Yeah, fire hydrants and that thing, more than anything else. We don't have a huge problem right now, but there are some pressure issues with those houses, especially at the very top of Snow's Mountain Road. They, because they're even, they're even with the tanks, so the water pressures can be... But until we do the water modeling, we don't want to just throw a booster station in there if it's not going to improve anything.
Is that something that's like on Cascade?
Yes.
Okay. That little building there? Okay.
Thank you, Bill. Building that. Appreciate that. Now, your, the role of the planning board is to recommend this or not recommend this, and it does include the funding sources. So if you want to make any changes, now's the time. Tell me.
I think he's pretty thorough with the whole process.
Nancy doesn't want to talk about it anymore. Uh-oh, Bill's got a question.
Uh-oh.
Yesterday, the border bridge walked all the Cascade Ridge roads, and that pavement there is now 13 years old and starting to show evidence of substantial cracks. And they've got a letter coming to the town saying, what is the town's schedule for repaving that road? And my guess would be that you really need to do it no later than 2019, and it probably ought to make its way onto this schedule. One of the things that happens if you delay those things too much, they cost you substantially more to do than if, when they're timed. And I don't know exactly when it is, but if you walk up there, you say, well, you know, you can see that the time is coming.
I have a question. Is some of it due to water erosion or anything like that, just wear and tear? And the snowcat going over it across country? You know about there?
No, it's not where that is at all.
It is?
It's just, blacktop moves, and over time, it cracks. You know, we see cracks in the roads all the time. And there's no evidence of any, there's one place that's undermined that needs some immediate attention, but by and large, the road was, in my opinion, well-built and has held up well. But, you know, at some point, you've got to go and resurface the roads.
Wasn't there a plan for resurfacing all the roads that timed it out? And I was just wondering if it's out beyond fiscal 19?
No. Where you see the $1 and you have the blanks, those are roads that Jim is in the process of prioritizing. Obviously Cascade Ridge is going to be one of those, and that, you know, we can, we see that it's degrading, but it's a relatively green road. You know, it's going to be mostly for the winter maintenance and making sure that we can plow it and keep it safe. But it will be in the plan. It's one of the roads he's looking at. He just hasn't... He wants to finish Noon Peak first. Jennings Peak has been a problem with a couple of the drainage structures up there, and he wants to take care of that. So Cascade Ridge is definitely on the plan, but I don't know which year.
And I think rather than redoing, I mean, since we're here looking for approval today, we can look at putting those numbers in for next year, probably.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. He's... Yes, yes.
What is left to do on Noon Peak?
Noon Peak is the section from the cottage to Boulderwood.
Okay.
That middle section there, because we've done both ends now. And we have some water line issues that we want to take care of at the same time. That's all the stuff that's feeding down into Windsor Hill, so you can imagine what it's like.
Who's the chair of the... I don't think Terry.
Terry.
No, no, no. See, I think we...
We didn't have a chair, but Terry, oh, Terry, right now.
Your fingerprints are all over this.
I think we got to do it in Snow's Mountain. I mean, Snow's Mountain.
I think there's a conflict of interest here.
You're going to confuse yourself.
Yeah, I think we pretty much won this thing out. I mean, there are obviously things that I don't agree with, and that's, like, I think you have to take the bullet, and sooner or later, these costs, these expenses, have to be paid. But I think we tried to smooth the curve out as best we could, and I would suggest that we accept it. And I don't think it requires a more than...
Yeah, I think it does.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Well, can we, before you make the motion, can we just go back quick to the transportation plan, RFPs? So you've got the updated RFPs, they're going, they're out at or going to engineering firms.
Yep.
We've got a timeline on there. We... Everybody get it? Okay. So we have a timeline there for setting everything up so that you will have information back by your next meeting. And the idea here is not to, well, you can if you want, but it's not to necessarily choose a company, but it's to get those ranges of costs so that we can either keep the $90,000 in here, reduce it, or increase it, whatever we need to. Okay? So the $90,000 item that's in there, I just left the $90,000 from last year. So we will modify it based on however the RFPs come back. And then we can rebid it after town meeting, after we get the funding approval. But I would hope that the planning board would take the lead at town meeting for this presentation so that we don't have the situation that we had last year. So if you guys could plan on doing that in March, that would be great.
Are we in a position where we're supposed to just kind of say, if the RFPs reach costs, the proposal comes in at $150,000, and that's just going to be put in as opposed to the 90, or is that going to be reconsidered at that point?
Well, that's up to you. You're submitting...
I guess I wasn't addressing everybody.
Right. You're submitting this plan, and you can put whatever contingency you want on the transportation plan number so that I can communicate that to the selectmen.
So I guess we have to consider...
You have to decide. Right.
Does the planning board, or the committee that worked on this with Mark, to make that presentation? Or I think we need to decide who's going to make the presentation so that we can prepare for it, because I think that that's going to be, that's going to be the key at town meeting, is having a really good source, yeah, a really good application.
And remember, you're only going to get 10 minutes.
No, no, I don't think it needs to be long.
Just remember Bruce, no, remember Bruce will hold you to 10 minutes.
Yeah, that's fine, but I don't think it needs to be long.
Yeah, no, don't...
I just think that, I think that we as a board need to make a decision, okay, who's going to present this?
Right.
And so we are prepared.
Right.
Because I think that's important.
I would think they're committed to do the presentation, because they're in the best position to answer any questions from the audience.
Okay.
That's the final act.
Almost done. Yeah, almost done.
It's a powerful presentation, though.
Tom and I will be there. We'll be tweaking through slides. No, but I think that it's more, most appropriate coming from you guys. And if there are, I mean, we can do presentations on the technical aspects of the CIP, but I think it probably, and it's something we've never really done, but it's probably appropriate for the planning board to say, somebody from the planning board to say, these are the bond issues that are being recommended, and I know the selecting go through it too. This tie is supposed to tie into the master plan, is supposed to tie into our infrastructure maintenance, which is really your purview as a planning board. So you guys should be part of this process.
I think it also lets town people know that, you know, these committees, that they do work as far as, there's a lot of work involved, and it only reinforces everything that is done. It's not something that's taken lightly, CIP, et cetera.
And, you know, I'll talk to Mike about, you know, if the building committee wants to put a page in the town report about everything that you did through the summer, that would be good. And if the planning board's report included talking about transportation planning and the rest of the CIP, I think, and especially with the large numbers that we have coming up, I mean, these are the paydays that we've been talking about since 2008. They're finally showing up, and that has, you know, look at the spikes, because look at the numbers. And when you think about our budget, okay, another important line to look at is the bottom line with the X's. That's the debt retirement. And while in terms of the rest of the plan, you know, it doesn't have this huge spike in it... in it, that is a hundred, over $100,000 increase going from 2013 to 14. Okay? That's, that's a lot of money, and the impact on the tax rate is substantial. But the plan does drop off because we've got so much that's hitting at the same time. And so there will be years when we get these peaks and valleys, that shows up in the debt service line in the operating budget. So these are not inconsequential numbers, but they're, they're things that we, you know, in a perfect world, we would already be repaying the rural development loan because we would have gotten all of the installations done in the last two years instead of trying to cram them in in 2014. But it just, it hasn't worked out that way.
But 2014 is already that deal?
Oh, it is, it is. But, but people, but when you see the impact and you look at the budget and you look at a bottom line, you know, we've been very conservative. We haven't had increases over 2% or 3%. And now we're talking about much larger, you know, double that, five or six.
This may be a really stupid question, but does, but when we go to the town, does that mean that you can say that the tax rate is going to be up now, but it's going to go down?
Well, in the long term.
I've never heard that. Go ahead.
Well, no, and that's basically what has happened. We have hit peaks with our debt service, and that service has been coming down over the last couple of years because we've been paying off loans. When we, when we did the water tank project, you know, we had, that was a $100,000 hit, if you remember, back in 2006.
Right, right.
Because, but we have paid that off now, and the debt service has dropped off because of it. I mean, it's, it's a cyclical thing when we hit these things. And again, things like the corporate pond dam improvement, that's in here. So if that doesn't happen, then these numbers come down by the $380,000. If we don't have to do the lagoons, or we can spread that out, you know, that may be hitting over here instead of at the peaks. So hopefully, the peaks will lower, will be lower, and we won't have such a great impact on the tax rate. But it isn't really, we've talked about, in the past, we've talked about the projects. We've never really had the discussion about, well, what's, what's that, what's that really doing to our repayment of all of these loans? And, you know, you're going to see big numbers. It's going to be almost $600,000. In a couple of years, it's over $600,000. That's a single line item in our budget. And when you have a $3 million budget, that's a, that's a big piece of it. So I just wanted to throw that out, that that's part of the discussions that we have that have, and people, I don't want sticker shock when we walk in with the budget, and it's not like it has been the last five years. Okay?
Right, but I think that that, I think that that's really.
No, but Terry, I, no, but see, that's what, and that's exactly, somebody who, who just gets it in the one hour that we talk about it at town meeting, that's, that's a hard thing to wrap your head around.
Yes, it is. And that's my point, is that, that's my point, is that it is hard to wrap your head around. And when these people are sitting out there in the audience, I mean, how, you know, we have to think really carefully about that presentation.
Exactly.
Because it, because it is, it's tough, it's tough to understand in, you know, a very short, short.
I mean, we talk about it all the time, and these subcommittees meet on it, you know, several times. And, you know, you get the, you get the, oh, my gosh, are we going to talk about this again attitude? And I know, because we, we do it every day. But, you know, so I'm, I've been, I've been watching this coming, but a lot of people haven't.
Yeah.
And, and so you need to, and if you guys have any questions, and you, you know, you want to look at the numbers in more detail, I'm fine with sharing any of this with anybody. So.
I think what happens is, what you've done is you laid out, the capital improvements plan kind of shows everybody what's going to happen. It's going to happen anyway.
Right.
Just because you showed a fire, a ladder truck in 2018.
Right.
Now, doesn't mean, and you show up a capital improvements plan, and somebody says, I don't want that. It may, it may happen anyway.
Right.
And so I think that what is the mouth to use, you just end up showing the town, townspeople as opposed to letting it happen and.
Right.
And deal with it.
Well, I, I think we've done a pretty good job of not dropping new things in here. I mean, we, we keep doing these slide projects, or we, year, or whatever. We've tried, and I think we're doing best with things like the vehicle replacement plan and things like that. We're trying to keep it as consistent as we can.
But I also think, Terry, that when we did the CIP committee, I think it was important that, Terry was concerned about, you know what, how much the tax rate was going to increase for houses. We put, what was it, $500,000? Was that the base?
$500,000 base house.
And we tried to keep it so it wasn't like, yes, it's a little higher, but it wasn't like overwhelmingly higher. And that's why we pushed out things, so that it would, you know, the sticker shock wouldn't be in your face. And I think that's important, that we let the town know that, too, that we did, that we were concerned about the tax base for people in the town. And that's a big thing.
And I think compared to the poor selling job at the last town meeting, I'm not, you know, I'm just saying, it's the way, the way the people are taking it. Some of the people are obviously looking at it just as, you know, all my taxes are increasing by a certain point, and that's it. And I think it's because they're not, they haven't been given enough information to come around to our point. I think perhaps if, if they understood, not just maybe saying, you know, all the committees met, I don't know, maybe have a list of how many times we met, or what went into it, or what was discussed, a little bit better job with that, so they know, it really took a lot of effort and work to get to this point. And a wish list that got thrown against the wall, and we're asking you to vote on it.
Well, I think, like we said, we discussed it, when we first started the CIP, we discussed, all of a sudden, there was an issue with the needs. Well, the needs and the wants are two different things, and we boiled it down to what we actually have to have to continue to function. And no matter what, you're going to have people that aren't going to accept it, no matter what you say. There are people out there that don't want, you know? But if we lay it across the line and show them how we did look at the whole project as a whole, and we were concerned about the increase in the tax rate, and even the debt service that was being paid off, it's extremely important for the town to know.
I think it's, I totally agree. I just think that all of these things need to be considered when we are preparing our presentation for the town.
I agree.
I think that, I think that that is the key to this whole thing. I mean, there's so much that we've been doing that is so important to the town, but I think that what we need to do is to have a really good presentation. So I think that it is something we need to kind of address.
Work hard, I believe, yep. Agreed.
And, and if it, you know, if you think that separate or additional public presentations will be beneficial, you know, other than the one required public hearing, you know, we'll, we'll come in, we'll do it on Saturdays, we'll do whatever you think will work. I mean, I don't want to waste time if you don't think it'll be worthwhile, but if you think it'll help get the information out and have people talking about it, we'll do whatever you guys and the selectmen want to do.
I have a question. Do you think, I mean, I know it's just the townspeople that vote on it, but do we owe it to the people that have properties here, that are residents here, to go through and have meetings, what was discussed, and what you can expect if this does pass?
If you can get them to come, then.
That's the tough, I know.
Then that's, we'll do it, absolutely.
But I think that if. We certainly can open, we can certainly open a door to that. It'll be interesting to see how many show up.
True, I agree. But at least, but at least we made the attempt.
The effort, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Well, when you have your budget meetings, and maybe we can do a presentation, planning board can do a presentation at the budget meeting.
I would love that.
Because it would only be, when is the budget meeting?
It's usually, it's usually the first Wednesday of February, I think. In the memo that I, timeline for town meeting, I, this year, so it would be the fifth, February 5th, or something like that. So, but again, we can, we can do, we can do separate meetings for the people, the non-resident property owners, if you want that to be on a Saturday. You know, we've done things on the president's weekend, or, you know, the vacation weeks. You know, we're, we're fine with, we're fine with doing that. So.
We can just have a discussion.
Well, it's, it's such a, it's such a large, it's such a large impact this year.
Yes.
That I think it would be, it would be who's us to get the information out and.
And, but I was thinking before, I asked me, because I'm thinking if the committee would like to function over board, the presentation.
Just talking about the CIP.
Yep.
So we'll, we'll schedule those, however, and if, if you guys would like to do the, you know, a presentation on the CIP as part of the budget hearing, that's, that's great. If you want to come, we're going to be doing the preliminary budget hearings with the selectmen next week. And we have the CIP as part of that, if you want to come for that, or any of you want to come for that, it's, you know, it's the planning board CIP, and I'll put whatever numbers and however you want to put them down. These are recommendations from staff to you. So you want to change it, it's your plan.
When's the meeting next week?
The meeting next week will be the night, Thursday, the 19th, would probably be when we would talk about the CIP. The meeting starts at 2:00, and I, you know, I haven't really set, if you guys want to be there, then we'll do 2:00 for the CIP and do that first.
Chair, send us an email tonight, reminder.
Yeah, we'll, we'll send an email.
Thank you.
I think we need to have, we need a version of the CIP.
You might as well, Terry. You're going to have to defend it at town meeting, so.
I agree that we accept, is that accepting?
You're recommending.
That we recommend the capital improvements plan as presented, conditional upon a.
The results of.
The results of the RFP to a line, the first line on the second page, traffic and parking study, the amount to be adjusted based on the results of the RFP.
I'll second that.
Okay, let me press the discussion. Paul and Taylor.
Paul.
And I want to thank the two committees for all the work that they've done, and just to record, show that Bill Lawson is now seated. Let's see, next, next thing on the agenda, we'll go to the core development plan discussion. Do you want to know what the bill?
Well, I, I asked whether you'd like to have the plan here, and I can put it up on a screen if you'd like that as you discuss it. I thought you were going to discuss it relative to the master plan? See, the master plan, was that the purpose of this meeting?
We did talk about getting a consensus of the board. I guess we could do that first.
Would you like me to get the plan up? It'd take about five minutes to hook the thing up.
Yeah, sure.
You want to, maybe put it on a table over here?
Okay.
It's a good thing these new TVs are light, man. TVs are light.
Well, you could put one right here, and you could have one available all the time.
Yeah, it could swing out.
Swings out, yeah, absolutely. Instead of the screen. The way of the world.
Can you stick that on the bottom?
Hey.
I can.
I'm good, thank you. I'm warming up. Not really.
Okay.
Is it not, does it need to be turned around?
Oh, wait a minute.
The base?
That's why he's the tech guy.
That was the hardest part.
He's like Kareem.
I believe at the last meeting, we said that we were going to go around the table and get a consensus of the board on the density of the core development. And that's probably the first thing we should do. Any thoughts on that?
Well, is, is everyone reasonably familiar with what the proposal was?
Well, I, I'm not sure if we should really base it on specifically what was presented. I think the concept of.
The concept.
Density is what we're really looking for.
Right.
And not, not specifics to this proposal that we saw at a workshop. So we just want consensus of whether or not we want that kind of density on C1 property. You agree with that?
Yeah. So to start the discussion, I, I think we do. Well, I like, I would like some responsible development in their area. I think it would be an immense improvement to minimize the amount of parking, you know, surface parking in that area of town. Now, I think it's a lot of caveats, you know, I think it's going to take a concerted effort of the town, the residents, the businesses, you know, it's, it's not one entity that's going to come in and just do this. So I think it's not going to be easy to do. But I think conceptually, it's, you know, I could see that as a significant step towards trying to put some energy back into the town, you know? Have to also be some people willing to invest in the mountain as well. But if you've got that all bundled together, I think it'd be a step in the right direction.
We just continue along.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely feel like the town core needs some revitalization. I can't tell you how many people walk into the shop and say, oh, where's the town? No, well, here. It would be nice to have a bit more vibrant in the long run after that. But, and one, responsibly, if there's a plan, and then the parking is really thoughtful. But, and one is to responsibly, if there's a plan and then the parking is really thoughtful, then that would make something.
I would agree with the thoughts just expressed pretty much, but in reading through the master plan, things that come to mind are the advanced preservation of the natural features and environment. And, and also, the master plan also addresses, what I think it was, that instead of being a one company, uh, instead of being a one company town, now that the mountain is independent and the water company is independent, it's not all one big unit. But in my discussions with Bill, and he may want to address this, Bill Gatlin, he may want to address this, in order for something of this scope to actually come to pass, it may need an angel with the funds to take control of the mountain, of the town, and then we'd be going back essentially to a one company town again. And so I think the word responsible has been used, and I would say some of the things that we should address responsibly as we look at it and not just, you know, overdo the commercialization.
Well, right now we're looking at this core development with the mountain being involved and then being independently on, that could change at any given point. And I think the other thing is, I think we do need to upgrade the village. I do think, as we all know, parking has been a major issue and like to preserve it as much as we can for somewhat open space. And we know it's, the developments will be in phases and, you know, I'll take it a step at a time, but I'm, I'm for doing something.
My position is several years ago, we revised the, the zoning ordinance to include C1. And the purpose of doing that was exactly for this reason, was to get higher density in the core area. So we practically eliminated the village's potential. And I think this is very consistent with what we've done in the past changes. So, yeah, I think it's, I think this density is, is right for this area, that's what we're hoping to see.
I think this area is going to develop one way or another. I think that the proposal has some good ideas and good points, I mean, it's obviously pretty vague at this particular point aspect. But I think it's important that when we move ahead, we move ahead in slow steps and we don't jump off a cliff here or take a plunge. Because there's a lot hinging in this little area right here. And I think we have to make sure that we do follow the general goal of the master plan. One of the items was to protect and enhance the great natural beauty of the valley. And I think that as we go forward with this, it would be important that, that be a great consideration along the other, I mean, I, I think it, it approaches the other goals as well, but I just think we're not, not whose side at that particular point. Take it one step at a time.
I agree with the concept, I'm a little apprehensive about a few things, but I like the concept. It's, and I understand putting a plan together to try to, developers or a major developer or whatever, but at this point, I don't know that we can do anything except embrace the concept. You know, the fear is if something gets started and then it's another, something happens and it's another 15 years or whatever before and you start with a piece of something that, you know, let me be destroyed, is, you can't control it. So I'm in favor of the concept, but I do have some concerns about things that go beyond that.
Um, I agree with the concept. I think that Warner Valley uses, I think that, um, someone who's ready for a plunge just did it last week and, when you said plunge, I was like, yeah, I know how to plunge. Through the ice. But anyways, no, I mean, I don't think we should plunge into it, but I do think that it's a, it's a, I like, I really like the concept. I think that, I think that it will revitalize Warner Valley if we move on. Well, I just read that it's the season's first ski, then the reviews of the top 20, the ski areas and number three vibrant, active area that is really critical to anyone wanting to come to the ski area, otherwise you really get bad view, lovely. And so I, I, I think it's critical. The other thing that I think our job is to make sure that it's on right and that includes character as well as, so that it's balanced and sound and intended our area, you know, that, so, you know, a lot of work put out for us, but I think we have to, and support this.
Thank you very much. Well, I think consensus of the board is definitely for development of high density in the core areas. But is there any way that you can get a, a, a streaming picture of this?
A what?
Is there any way that Tom can get a streaming picture of the?
Oh, oh, you mean, oh, I don't know.
Unfortunately, not, not well. Even if we, if, if it wouldn't work. Sorry.
No, that's okay. Bill?
Well, thank you for your support. I think your support of, of this plan that Chris and Tom and I and Bull Stokler and Alan had spent a lot of time on is really essential. And as we talked at the last work session, to, for us to be successful in talking to developers and investors and people who share the vision to do this, that the support of the community and the planning board and the select board are, are absolutely essential. No, no developer, no investor wants to come into a community and, and get themselves into a fight. So your support and, and of the concepts and the implementation, I think is, is one of the keys. One of the slides that we looked at when we looked at this before is that a successful resort community requires collaboration between the landowner, the town, and the, and the mountain. And we recognize that, and the town's a huge player. So, moving ahead to make this happen is, is essential. One of the things we discussed, and I think the RFP that you're putting out is one of the things that helps iron out a lot of the gray areas that, that need to be addressed. There were other gray areas in the, that we thought would be worth addressing at some point in time. And right after the question, I heard you say maybe some of these could be addressed as early as, as this, but the, the gray areas and the zoning are the things that take, can take months to, to work through to clarify. And it would be great if we could start working on those zoning issues and clarifying those in, in a short timeframe, in a year and a half. Bill, in, in that regard, you, you think the biggest area, gray area would be to come up with some consensus of what the new parking rules would look like? Well, that's probably the most contentious thing to work for. We all know the amount of time we spend on parking.
Yeah.
Is, is, is huge. Certainly, and, and maybe until we get this study done, we can't say there needs to be X number of parking places for X number of square feet. But we can address the fact that most of our parking today is not within the 300-foot radius that the zoning requires. And if we push surface parking out as we, as we go through phases, there might be times when that parking is more than 300 feet away from the intended use. That's something that could be dealt with sooner rather than later. I think we all know that our parking space requirements are 10 feet wide and 20 feet long. That's great for the guy who drives up a new SUV, but a large percentage of our cars, 50, 75, I don't know what, are substantially smaller. And if you go to malls or anything else, a certain number of the parking spaces are nine by 18 feet. That certainly, all of a sudden, increases the amount of parking that we've built already in Warner Valley. Can we do that now? Yeah, maybe we could do that now, but those are, those are two things in parking that, that can be addressed sooner rather than later. We, we also have the real confusing issue that we've dealt on between roads, road classifications and driveways, whether they can be on a right-of-way, whether they can be on an easement, how wide that right-of-way is going to be and what the setback is from those things. Those are, those are relatively arbitrary numbers that maybe don't apply in the C1 zone. I've met with Chris Hodges, Chris says, I want the roads wide enough with turnarounds and with, with curves so that, so that they're safe, and I want them maintained so I can get on them. The rest of those issues that, that we sometimes struggle with from a health and safety issue, he doesn't care about. And if they don't apply in the C1 zone, how, how do we deal with that and get, get rid of that gray area? The other thing that we talked about is the open space requirement in C1. And that if you look at this plan, it exceeds the 20% open space requirement considered as a whole. But what if somebody wanted to come in and, and start doing some of the development before the town green gets built? And I don't think any of us think that would happen, but I think it's important to be able to consider the open space requirement in the C1 zone as a whole, rather than in a, in a building-by-building basis. And as long as each building, when combined with the previous development in the C1 zone, the open space exceeds 20%, I'd like to think we can move ahead in, on that basis. Those are the, those are the, the big, those are the big issues, none of which are huge issues. We deal with parking widths and, or pedestrian, the width of pedestrian ways and, and SE Group told us, a lot of that stuff has to do with how pleasant a walk it is, what takes place along that walkway, are there other gathering spots? The landscaping, the drainage, snow removal, and all of those issues. I don't expect we're going to, we're going to solve that problem until you get some studies done in your RFP. But the, the more of these gray areas that can become objective, all of us, I think, the people who are interested in pursuing a shared vision for a vibrant board will take us into the future. Do you guys want to add anything? Tom Corfins here and Chris Sununu is here, they've both worked on this plan and, you know, what they want to add. No, I don't. Bill?
No, I don't have anything to add, except that I would say, when we, when we first, we hired a guy named George Beersley, who was from Denver, and he had done a lot of land planning. He had done land planning on resorts outside of the United States as well as in the mountains and a lot of stuff in Colorado in the west. And we had hired a land planner from Boston originally to come up here and help us figure out what, what should happen on the land that we had purchased. It took one meeting before I fired him. He didn't get it at all. And so then I looked around and I asked Pete Seibert, the guy who had started Vail, and I knew him very well, and, and I had been on the Vail board, and I said, I explained what our situation was, and asked him who he recommended. And he recommended this guy, George Beersley. George Beersley was, was really, really smart, understood mountain planning and, and village planning in the mountains. And a lot of what is in the zoning ordinance today and in the, in the, in the development regulations was written by George. And, and I think it has stood the test, test of time really well. And what he felt very strongly about was that the last thing that should happen in this valley was to build a core. And the core that is, you're being shown here, is exactly what he had in mind as, as feeling the final resolution of what this valley should look like. And because the core is, can't be done early, the core has to come last, because you need all the infrastructure that, that it takes in the valley with beds and housing and, and, and all of the other things that have been built over the, over the period of time to support a core, that's more than the town square. And I think if he was alive today, he died a couple of years ago, he would really approve of, of what this plan here is. He had worked a lot with snow engineering, he had a lot of respect for them, and, you know, this is, in a way, this is exactly what he wanted to see. And, you know, I'd just add to that and say, when we look into the future and what, what the future is for Warner Valley and the economy of Warner Valley, we really need this. This isn't something that, you know, I'm 82 years old, I don't know when this thing is going to be finished, but this is the, the final, the final really important step to achieve economic stability in Warner Valley. We need those beds in there, we need the tightness, we need the, the addition of more shops, more restaurants, and more vibrancy in the, and that word is really, really critical. And in order to do that, you've got to have a tight core, it's got to be pedestrian, which means you've got to figure out what you're going to do with the parking, and it can't be surface parking. You know, we've done enough surface parking in here and, you know, that's not the answer, it's just a mess, and it's not attractive, it detracts from the, the overall appearance. And when you get into the core, it is so important that there's a tightness and a cohesion to it, and you really need this. I can't emphasize that enough, so. Chris?
Yeah, no, I, I guess I would just add, there's nothing that, that Bill or, or Tom had mentioned that I would disagree with in the slightest bit. It's a, it's a great plan, you know, I think what they've put together, what Snow Engineering has put together, it's a great conceptual plan. I, I can't emphasize enough and, and support enough the, the concerns about things like parking, getting it right, because you really have one shot at it. If you don't get it right, the core goes bad, so to say. I've done a tour in the past couple of months to a variety of resorts all over North America, and I've seen ones that have, were done very, and we walked them with land planners, with developers, with designers. There are a lot that, that are done very, very well, and there are a lot that you think are done well, and they're done just terribly. The, the devil is really in the details in a lot of this stuff, and, and again, that's not quite where we are yet, but you, but conceptually, this is clearly a first step that, that absolutely has to be taken. There are other aspects that I, I think as, you know, how we use green space lines, I think, to be honest, I think handles their sightlines terribly. The fact that you can't really see the golf course from town square, because we don't want to cut any branches and we don't want to do anything, it looks unlandscaped and, and unpretty at times. But sightlines is a visual connection that we have to, we're going after customers here. I mean, that's ultimately what we want as customers. So there are little nuances and details like that I think would be important to, to start at least talking about early on in the process. And that, and look, as, as we all know, we can, we can keep doing things the way we've been doing it and the way, you know, Booth Creek promoted it, have some guy up at the mountain running the mountain and a bunch of different businesses down here and everyone kind of doing things differently. But it, it really makes no sense for the town of Warner Valley, we're a cruise ship. I always picture Warner Valley as a, as a real cruise ship, and it never makes sense for everyone in the cruise, all the different departments in the cruise ship not moving forward in the same direction. And, and, and that's kind of where I think we've been for the past 15 years. And I think this, this plan really puts a lot of solidarity and solidification to a lot of these outliers that kind of float around there. Maybe it's gray areas in, in the zoning or whatever it might be, maybe it's gray areas in our marketing approach, gray areas in, in how we're going to go after new customers and new, new folks that want to buy homes here. But this, this plan really solidifies a lot of that, and, and I, I think it's, I think it's terrific, and it's, it's an absolute next step for where we want to go as a valley. And again, if, if, trust me, if there were things in that plan that I thought or other planners. And again, if, trust me, if there were things in that plan that I thought or other planners thought, you know, didn't make sense, I'd be the first one to tell you, but right now I think it's tremendous. The last plug I will push, if you look at the plan, the most important part of it in my mind, it's the gondola, from the town to the mountain. And I say that looking at all these other resorts who have either connected or not connected their towns and their mountains and their facilities together. At the end of the day, it probably increases everyone's property value at least twenty percent, in my calculation. It is a game changer. I'll kind of leave with this, you know, when I first bought the mountain in October 2010, that November, about a month after, I was down at the Boston Ski Show, and they did a reception for all of the New Hampshire resorts, so all the general managers and some of the marketing directors were there. And it was kind of my first time, I was going around and introducing myself and meeting a lot of people for the first time. And Molly, I think it was Molly, I always forget, it might have been Rick, up at Loon, she's the marketing director at Loon, and came over to me and said, "So how's it going at Waterville?" I said, "Great, you know, we're all excited," and I was giving my spiel. And she said, "So, you know, what are your plans?" And we gave some, you know, some outlines of where we wanted to take things marketing-wise. And she looked at me and she said, "Man, you don't know what you've got down there, do you?" I was a little taken back, and I said, "Well, no, why don't you enlighten me? Why don't you tell me what I've got down there?" And she looked me dead in the eye, and she said, "Oh, no, no, we don't know really either, but we're really afraid that you're going to find out one day." And what it really said was, and I've heard this from other folks, what Waterville has is so unique. I mean, we all know that, we talk about it, but sometimes we forget to really look, what's going on at Sunapee, what's going on at Loon, what's going on at Cannon and Bretton Woods and these other mountain resorts? But what we have is so unique, and they tell me all the time, as I've gotten to know the general managers, "We would kill for what you have. We would kill to have what you have down there." So it's, I think we take it for granted sometimes of how unique and special we are, we always say it, but to really get down to the nuts and bolts and think about it, and how it differentiates us from the rest of the East Coast, frankly. The general manager at Stowe said this, virtually the exact same thing, "Oh, if I only had what you guys had, you know, I'd run the East Coast." And he's probably right. So we have the opportunity to take everything to the next level, but you've got to do it right, and you've got to do it carefully, and I give these guys a lot of credit. I think WCI has done a tremendous job really putting together that foundation for those next steps. So I think we're all excited to see where it can go.
Chris, I have a question about the gondola. How do you see that operating? You know, I see a problem with, if you want people to come to town and park and take the gondola up to the mountain, I see that as a problem with parking, where there's plenty of parking up at the mountain. How do you see that working? Do you see people coming down from the mountain to the town?
The gondola would provide, I think, a variety of benefits. Number one, I think its primary function use would be to bring all the folks who are currently in town, who are already part of our bed base, a centralized location to get up there. I don't, I don't think any of us really foresee somebody coming to Waterville Valley, parking in town square to go skiing. It's more of a conduit to get people from here up to there. And obviously, that does a couple of things. It makes, you know, we have our shush bus system, it's a difficult system to handle and manage, it's not environmentally friendly, this provides a huge environmental green aspect in terms of the transportation. In terms of its actual operation, I think there's a variety of things we can talk about. It's probably in the best interest for the, frankly, for the town to own something like that. That's an opportunity. We could own it, the mountain could own it. It would be a year-round transportation, so it's not really just transportation, but in the summer, it starts, it almost replaces what you might have over at Snow's Mountain, and it becomes a true attraction and draw in itself. It could be incredibly unique in that opportunity. And by, because of our association with the Forest Service, and not just making it a conduit to go have lunch at the top of the mountain, but to be an educational type of tour of the White Mountains, of whether it's the plant life and the animals and, you know, conservation efforts within the Forest Service, whatever it could be, there's just a whole variety of things that are gondola to do that others could not. I mean, you can go to the gondola at Wildcat, and they take a ride up to the top of the mountain, and you ride back down, and you create that fun. But here at Waterville, because we're so unique, because we truly are surrounded by, you know, over half a million acres of White Mountain National Forest, it really can be something much, much different. And I see that, when you go out west, you can see what they're doing on the ride. They kind of build a whole series of programming around that transportation. So, I mean, we can talk about, and all that, but...
No, I always say out west, they really do use it, but do you see more summer activity at the mountain to support it?
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, when we go after, whether zip lines or Kennedy tours, or a variety of things that we're talking about with the Forest Service to do up there for summer. Just to back up a little bit, about a year ago, the mountain was grandfathered in, kind of first exclusivity on summer use by congressional legislation. So technically, before someone could apply for a permit and do their own summer activities up there, that's, we're kind of, Congress thanked, they did one thing right, they took that risk off the table. So whether it's a music festival, zip lines, or, I mean, if you go out west, everybody has massive amounts of summer amenities at the base of their mountains. The Forest Service, when we first got here, and I'm not saying, poster in and as a TV using that word, but as an example, said, "Oh, you'll never be able to do this type of stuff." Well, they've already started cracking the ice with that type of stuff out there. Whatever we do, whether it's at the mountain or in the valley, has to be done within the charm and character of Waterville Valley. There are certain amenities that I can tell you as the mountain operator, I'll never go after, because it's not really Watavillish, Watavill-esque, it kind of, it's a little commercial. There are things that work very well at Cranmore that don't work well at here, because they're North Conway and they're kind of a commercial-type mountain, and it works great for them. Might not be the best thing for us. The gondola is an example of something that I think is, this place was designed for. It's just a deal. So it's a big part of where, a big next step for all, where we want to see everything go. And just in terms of the transportation, getting up and back to the mountain for people who are already here in the valley, it'd be huge. Obviously, you know, we're going to go after even expanding our parking lots, you know, we have what we have, so it's not like we're trying to replace, or bring parking or anything like that.
Have you been in touch with the Forest Service about the gondola?
Almost weekly. Every three years, yeah. It's, you know, it's one of those things that, like, we talk about, the driver with the Forest Service, the deal we kind of cut was, okay, let's go after Green Peak, the Spanish yard and Green Peak first. That would be the first permit, because we knew that was kind of first in queue for a while. It had already been at least proposed as part of the master development plan. It was the easiest to do, and frankly, made the most sense in terms of finally taking the mountain forward where other mountains have all expanded and gone through their expansion, and we've stayed. So it made the most sense. But part of that was, the Forest Service said, "Well, you can't go after multiple permits at once, or at least you have to get one permit approved," which we have done. They have to at least see some construction starting and investment in it actually coming to fruition, and then we'll start taking the next step. I can tell you, we've already started internally taking those next steps on permitting snowmaking pond, gondola, and some other expansion opportunities up there that we're looking into. We're not, we haven't submitted the application to the Forest Service yet, but we are ready to at a moment's notice. So as soon as Green Peak really starts to take shape, that's when we'll go after the permit there. It's, it'll probably, the permitting of a gondola would probably be attached to the permitting of the snowmaking pond, because they're in such close proximity to each other. The gondola permitting is actually quite minor. I mean, it's really just permitting the, looking at the area, the impact that go through a little area of the forest between the town and the mountain, so it's actually quite minor. The snowmaking pond is right next to it, it shares the same ecological biosphere and all that, so it would all come under kind of the same umbrella, but that is definitely the next step. And they said, "Yeah, as soon as we're all go and we see that Green Peak is, you know, has taken shape, the lift is in, things are moving, then absolutely, let's hit that next permit and move quickly." So they're all for it, it's all been, I don't want to, I can't speak for them, I suppose, but there is, they have indicated nothing to make me think that it cannot and should not be done, so, very possible.
Chris, would the gondola require a cleared swath of land traveling the full contiguous length of the gondola for access and so forth, or just to the towers?
Technically, it can be done either way. I would tell you that what we'll probably do is go out and do some wind testing. You can do a tall gondola that'll shoot right over the forest with just towers, but you really expose yourself to wind issues. A gondola can work two ways. It can be nice and heavy, so the wind doesn't affect it, or if it's not done right, it can work almost like a sail, and actually, the wind will really start carrying it. I don't want to say what is the best path, we'll do some studies, but it could be a swath. It could be a swath. We don't necessarily want to do that, but if you have to keep it below some of the tree lines as you go through, that's a possibility. I think we'll have to go with the engineering before we really do.
Keep in mind that you've got to figure, you've got to allow for evacuation. So you're going to have to have some sort of a swath, so people, in the event that you need an evacuation, rescuers can get there and get people down safely.
Do you see it as a lot, a couple of large capacity vehicles?
We've always envisioned, no, I personally, I've always envisioned it in terms of allowing for proper carrying capacity and the flow of folks, we've always envisioned it as more of a traditional six or eight-passenger gondola. That ultimately, I mean, in an ideal world, it would go up and connect with a gondola shooting a Green Peak. To go, I call it, you might have heard my spiel before, I call it taking care of grandma. You know, we have great families come up here, and, you know, the grandparents come up, or even maybe the really little kids come up. And, you know, the family goes skiing and they come back and they tell the grandparents how their skiing day was, because they don't ski or whatever it is. But now we're actually taking folks who don't participate in downhill skiing and making them part of that recreation experience. They can get on the gondola, go to town square, and ride up and maybe have lunch at the top of the mountain, and really feel like they're part of that recreational experience that we have here. So that's one of the benefits, as I've always seen it. That's kind of the game changer, and really where folks are taking things into that 21st century modern resort, getting the entire family, because that's what we are, we're a family resort, getting that entire family involved with whatever we're doing as a community.
I don't know if we're just giving out opinions as today as a group of a concept?
Yeah, we don't have any applications, so we could, we could print out a list so that if we want to deal with in the future, I mean, as part of the record, so that we have an idea of what the concept kind of might look like?
We can print this, but as you know, from what you've seen, there are a whole bunch of phases to this thing. There's the pedestrian, there's a vehicular connection, there's the underground parking which is not immediately visible in this plan. So I guess a question is, and I'd be happy to sit down with anybody, run through the plan and say, "Yeah, we'd like a copy of that," or a package would be the, they're all put together, a package, you can see?
I didn't mean any to that extent. It's just, if we're sitting here saying, "Yes, we approve the concept," it'd be nice to say, "That's kind of the concept." And we don't have to get into detail, but if, two years from now, we're going to think back on this, and somebody's going to say, "Well, what kind of a concept was it? What are we going to, just describe what we're going to remember?"
A lot of the details, although not planning details, a lot of the concept details that I think have been on the same page are involved in the whole, this whole PowerPoint presentation that talks about the things you need for successful communities and so on. So we can certainly make that available on some basis, but I think that whole message is really, really part of what we talk about when we talk about moving a plan ahead.
So you don't want to give us a printout of just that picture?
I will. I don't think that right there stands alone all by itself very well, but...
Well, no, but I mean, but at least, if for future reference, I mean, rather than twenty things, underground parking, or this open space, or that, I mean, that's all subject to change, and whatever, however it may be developed, I understand that, but to create some kind of a conceptual picture that isn't necessarily going to be accurate in the future, at least, to my point, it's something to look at and say, "This is the general concept." That's all.
So I have a question for either Chris or Bill or the rest, I mean, instead of listening to this, we're talking here a major redevelopment of not only the mountain, the town, and everything, on a scale bigger than what Bretton Woods has done, or at least equal to what Bretton Woods has done over the last fifteen years. And I agree with you, Bill, that the town, it's important for someone who wants to come in and put the energy and money behind that kind of a revitalization, that he's convinced that the town is not going to be an obstacle. What, if you were that developer, what would you want from the town? To be able to demonstrate that kind of commitment?
Well, actions speak stronger than words. And we all know that there, you come into town, there's going to be a variety of thought on it. But if you go to any great resort, if you take any resort that you've been to and you say, "Wow, this is great," whether it's some venue at that resort, or the overall feeling, or a vibrant core or whatever, if you went and talked to the municipalities where that happened, I can just guarantee you that that town as a whole wanted to make that happen. They are as big a supporter and do what they need to do to make it happen. It takes the mountain, it takes the landowner, and it takes the town to really want it. It's not a passive, a passive thing. You really have to want it, and you've got to help make it happen. And I think the things that we identified in our work session last time are all things that demonstrate that. One, the zoning changes that we can make immediately, say, "Yeah, we're serious about making sure that there are no gray areas that are a hurdle. Yes, we're going to make sure this transportation, parking, pedestrianization study gets done, so we continue to make good decisions relative to what we want this to look at." And as we move forward, there are a number of things that we can do in the short run, and I don't know what the short run means, about improving our walkways, improving our pedestrian pathways, improving our connections, improving our night lighting, instituting regulations about how you, having good pathways from these parking areas to the intended uses. So if you've got to walk a little bit further, you know, it's a pleasant walk, not a torturous walk. And then, we talked about starting to get together and think about, what are the public-partner-private partnerships that allow us to do things, like build structured parking, and not have that be a financial burden in the long run, but be an economic stimulus, having someone build the hotel and the hotbeds we need? I think those are the things that we can do and be working on as we move forward. It's not going to happen tomorrow. We don't think somebody's going to walk in here tomorrow with an excavator and start to build this, but our attitude, our approach to the issues that have got to be solved is of utmost importance, in my opinion. Do you guys want to add anything to that?
No, I mean, you know, if you're looking for actually, you know, something, and to be very open about it, we're talking to developers, and I know these guys have how we are. So while someone isn't coming in tomorrow, soon, I mean, we do want to move soon, so I don't want folks to think that, "Oh, we have a few years here." I mean, I think a developer would like to see something soon in terms of, maybe it's, like you said, action side of the words, maybe it is seeing something in March. I don't know what form it would take, where the town endorses the plan conceptually, where the town does make some changes, either on the parking side, or, you know, I think if a developer saw that we are starting to take care of some of those little gray area things that aren't major issues, but clearly sends a signal that we are taking those steps to get to where we want to be. So I don't think it has to be anything major and significant, I don't think it has to be a letter of endorsement, so to say, but even just showing some progress on these, what I would consider fairly minor, fairly simple issues, I think goes a long way. And I think the fact that we have town meeting in March is significant. I can tell you that folks we've been talking to, and there's a variety of them, everything from banks to actual developers, and springtime is around where we're looking to start really getting folks involved, outsiders, so to say, involved in the details of what we do here. You know, I firmly believe we're going to have an incredible winter. I think we haven't had a really strong winter here since I got here. I think this winter's going to be terrific, and I think it's going to put a lot of confidence behind what we have the ability to do as a town. So, yeah, it's not tomorrow, but I think we have to start thinking in the next few months about what steps you So, yeah, it's not tomorrow, but I think we have to start thinking in the next few months about what steps you guys are willing to take. And then hopefully give them the confidence in the next 12 months. They come in, they want to move forward, it helps push the Forest Service so they can move forward on their plans and open up some more doors for them. So it all, it all kind of happens in concert, but I think over the next six to 18 months, we have the potential to really start moving forward.
You plan on presenting this at the town meeting?
Please pardon?
You plan on presenting this?
Well, we discussed at that last work session, how to, how to share this with the property owners in town, and we didn't really conclude with that. And to you, my sense is that maybe town meeting's not the right venue to do that, but that would cloud a lot of the other issues that you deal with business-wise at town meeting. But we are available anytime to do any kind of public presentations, public forums, focus groups, discussion groups, concept discussions that we collectively think are essential to getting town support.
I think that, personally, I think that having presentations prior to town meeting, so that white people go to town meeting, they really understand what the whole concept is. And what the planning board, what the planning board agrees with, what the selectmen agree with, you know, that we are all on board together. And I think that Chris, I mean, Chris's input is huge, because I think that having your input is a change from what the town has felt in the last 15 years. And I think that that is extremely important for the town, for all the people in town to really understand that we are all in this together. And I think that if we can, we can do a couple of presentations prior to town meeting, then when we go to town meeting and talk about transportation and what we're doing with transportation, it's just gonna have a better impact.
I agree with that 100%. It'd be easier to get the transportation study funding approved. You know, people get this broader concept and understand that we're trying to move forward.
You know? I, having been involved in a number of these meetings where we try to present concepts and we get, you know, the odd dozen people, the same dozen people that show up for all of these. We may, we can certainly do as many pre-meetings as we like. I would suggest that we might think about having, setting aside a half hour prior to the start of town meeting. And do one of the meetings then, for those, because you get a lot of people who will commit to go to town meeting, that won't come to any of the stuff. So at least give them a chance, and I'm not opposed to other meetings. I think that's one thing to do. I, because I think at town meeting, we need to make a strong case for presenting a rationale for why we want to spend 90,000 or whatever the number is on a transportation study. And I look at it as three things, answering the question of parking, you know, what kind of, what do we really want to do with parking down there? Roads, trails in that center area, what might they kind of look like? And then I think the big thing is this question of the gondola versus alternate transportation systems. The gondola's a wonderful concept. The question is, can we figure out a way to financially? Is there a scenario which suggests that you can make that financially viable? And on all three of these, in the transportation study, we've got to look at some finances too. How in the world could we go about affording something like this? And I think at the town meeting, we ought to get a sense of the town. I mean, you know, at the end of the meeting, we gotta take a vote on the sense of the town. You know, how many, you know, how many people are willing to say, you know, I like this idea? And we ought to put some energy and excitement into trying to help someone else to make this happen. And if we could do those three things, I think we'd have a, you know, what else we can do at this stage?
You can do it non-binding, Warren.
Non-binding, yeah. We've got a non-binding sense of the meaning, you know, Warren article or some type, where we would actually take a vote. Yeah. You know, how many people think this is a good idea, or how many people think this is bad?
I have a question, because I think some of the townspeople might, they think of this a comfortless angle, I guess. So at some point in the future, there's a gondola connects the floor to the mountain or whatever, and it all becomes reality. And let's say it's either a joint venture, or the town owns it, or whatever. But if it's, if at minimum it's a joint venture with the property owners, how do we see the, I mean, I guess if you buy a ski lift ticket, you can use the gondola that day, but how do the residents, how would they deal with that if their property taxes are paying for it? And some of the other resorts that have this, how does that work?
Well, that's why I think you need some outsiders to come in and do a study of the concept. You can't answer those questions right now, Bob. I mean, but someone can take a look at this, because it depends, is there any public financing that's potentially available? We don't know. What would be the nature of that? What would be the entity or who would have to own it? There's a whole host of questions that come around us. But they're worthwhile questions to ask, but I think the best way is to get some outsiders to help us ask those questions. Because we're not, I don't think anybody's gonna be able to answer them.
All I know, I don't know if it was created somewhere else.
Did I make a comment? I think one thing that has to be considered, I think this discussion is really valuable, and I certainly agree with with the tone of it and what, and the specific suggestions, what Bill said and other people have said about doing something that is a presentation to the townspeople. But keep in mind, we've got a huge number of property owners who are not residents here and do not come to town meeting. And I think it's very, very important that we communicate effectively with those people. And that's probably got to be done separately, really, from town meeting, which is not to say that we shouldn't do what's been suggested here at town meeting, but I think we've got to go beyond that in order to try and reach those people. And I don't think we've really thought hard about that in terms of how we show them. We want the whole community to be excited about this thing. And I think that that includes not just the residents and the people who live here, but also those people who own property here. And I think a lot of those are looking for something that indicates what the future is gonna be in Waterlo Valley. And I think this is a really exciting plan. I think a lot of people are gonna realize that, and I think we want their support as much. And they're very much, in many ways, more involved than the residents in the sense that they live in these outlying places in Boston and so forth. They've got their own contacts down there, and those contacts might be very, very important to us in terms of having people who are enthusiastic and act as missionaries, taking this plan and talking about it to their friends and neighbors and business associates. So I think we really, that's the second part of the rollout of this plan. I think it's.
I would suggest the season pass party at the conference center. People look forward to that, you know, I mean, we get to hear something about the mountain, how, whatever this presentation is. But there's, and you've got beer and wine or whatever available, whatever. I mean, it seems to be, that seems to be the venue that people go to. I think if you're looking to try to get those weekenders, you pick a weekend that the people are gonna be here, you know, I don't know. And, and something, I don't know, pays for it, but something like that gets done so that they come and listen to a presentation. That's just an idea, a good idea.
If you wanted to do something before March, you could do it during vacation week, where we would see a lot of residences, you know, folks that own condos come up. We know, we do focus groups over, we'll be doing focus groups over Christmas and every break week, specifically towards the mountain and what we're doing there, so that's always an opportunity.
We're not gonna put a presentation on, I don't think.
Well, hell no. Someone's gonna have to do it. I think, I think, you know, in conjunction with Waterlo Company, in the scheme of, I think, you know, the suggestion of trying to target for doing it for all the people that are outsiders. But I, I think it ought to be a, it ought to be all free sponsoring it somehow.
I agree, yeah.
Otherwise it's gonna be, you know, otherwise it's not gonna be looked on as, it'll be looked at differently that way.
And I agree. I think that, I think that every entity needs to be making the presentation so that people understand that it's coming from everyone's fault, and we all are supporting it.
It's a partnership.
Yeah, I think it's really important that we all.
I think if we put the bug out there too, you know, to start it, and you have repetitious meetings afterwards, and the bug is out there because they've attended these meetings, the partnership meeting, and then we go forward and have more, I bet you'll see more participation by the people that even don't live here and live here, because it's an enthusiastic thing to happen.
I think it's really important to start with the present, presentation, this presentation, I wonder. Because you want to be able to have the discussion with people. The most, the best thing that happened at that other work session we did was the hour or hour and a half we spent talking with each other afterwards about what we liked and how, what had to be done to make this happen, and so on and so forth. And to have that discussion without the benefit of those of us all that have been involved in putting it together is not necessarily the best way. I'd say have your, have your meetings, have your, whatever we host, if they're fine, give people stuff they can take away with them if they, if you think that's important. But I'd do that before just putting the material out there. Putting the material out there on a standalone basis, I think you don't, you don't control the conversation.
I think the important part, I mean, as far as people, I think is the important part is the partnership between town, Waterlo Company, and mountain.
Absolutely.
Showing that, because we haven't had any solidarity like that for a very long time here in the valley. And I think that is a very good point and a point that will drive people to be extremely interested in what happens.
20 years. Back when it was all the same guy.
So how do, how do we put our heads together and put together a program to roll this out and garner as much support as possible, is the question.
I would just say, you guys pick the day, we'll open up the conference center and do a nice big panel discussion of all three sitting up there.
I think we'd probably try to bring Claire over, Tom, to, you know, I think there's some real merit in having an outside expert that's worked for all three of us, who is known in the industry to be answering these questions, rather than any one of the three of us saying, we need a parking garage, we need a gondola, we need more beds. You know, having somebody, the outside expert office has more credibility.
Yeah, it was nice to have him at the workshop.
Yeah. I think, so if we pick a day, I'd try to work it out with Claire.
I think having some kind of document, maybe at the, towards the end of January, beginning of February, when we were finalizing what we're moving forward to town meeting, but actually having a booklet similar to like town report, that has an introduction that can be signed by chairman of the planning board, the mountain manager, the developer, and saying, here's some information about development plans or future plans for the valley. And laying out that along with the town capital program, along with, you know, just any future changes to the zoning ordinance, whatever you want to put in there. But having something that's separate from the town report, something that people can, that we can mail to all of the property owners. You know, I don't think it would cost that much in the long run to get that information out. And have a set script, if you will, that what we're gonna talk, you know, if you're talking about controlling the message, it's, you know, that lets you put it out there.
If your good town's gonna do that mail out, could they, wouldn't you be able to maybe pick a date and put it in that mail out of whatever meeting? But there's gonna be a, sure, if you want to do it before then, sure. I mean, that's just one way of.
So Mark, I'd like to know, who's in a better position to try to push this from perspective of town, Board of Selectmen? Board of Selectmen?
I think so.
I think what, I think what we should do is get the Board of the Selectmen to appoint someone to work with Bill and with the mountain, and sit down and put together the plans for that kind of a meeting. I mean, you need some contact point that's gonna represent the town's interest and let them get together and decide, these are the eight steps that we're gonna go through. I don't think, you know, it's wonderful to throw out ideas here, but someone's gonna ultimately have to, and go back and say, okay, we're gonna convert. And I don't want to just dismiss the planning board, but I'm wondering whether the Board of.
Does it make sense to have two people, one from the planning board?
Sure, maybe, yeah. Maybe we get somebody from the planning board, somebody from the Board of Selectmen, yourself and whoever you want to represent the mountain, and we'll sit down, we'll say, look, we should hold this kind of a session, this kind of thing, that kind of thing, and put an action plan together. If we don't do that, ain't gonna happen.
Great idea.
And if I could only add, the sooner the better, because based on the timeline, if you want to get something out in January, this presentation or whatever you want to do, probably happen over Chris's break.
Yes.
If you want to incorporate, you know, people that have condos up here, so.
I was gonna say the same thing, I think something might happen.
It's gonna, it's gonna be really tough to do anything well thought out, but Chris's break is next one.
Yeah, kidding.
I mean, it's really, it's tied upon us.
But the February vacation we worked, Chris's break is. But you won't, but the problem, if you wait till February vacation, you won't have a packet of information that means anything by January.
What if we just had a general overview that's put out, I mean, nothing too specific, but just giving those people an idea as to, this is what we're looking at, this is what we're planning. No specifics, because nothing is specific right now, but showing people that everybody is willing to work together to move ahead.
Well, that's why I think a smaller steering committee charged with figuring out the best way to proceed. And do something at Christmas, it's awfully tight.
Well, I don't think, I don't think it has to be, I don't think it has to be completed at Christmas. I think it needs to be initiated at Christmas, and maybe by February vacation, we're able to have a better, a better sort of more complete presentation.
But I think you're gonna get people one time.
I don't think you can do it one time.
Some of us in the valley have been to this conceptual plan before, whenever it was 10, 15 years ago. You know, a lot of what, it didn't seem serious. I think the big difference this time around is for the effort or for the message to be put out that there's gonna be a partnership here, a three-way partnership. And that the towns, the town officials or whatever, I mean, we're serious about this, because this is really gonna be a major, a major push. But I wouldn't want it to be like the last one.
Tom, could you?
I'm not sure that it can't be done partially at Christmas, because what really, this thing tells the story. And some of you saw that, not everybody that was in here saw the story. But that is the best that our consultants, snow engineering, and the architectural firm that we're collaborating with them have got. We can set that up in the base lodge, and you can put out a memorandum that shows that it's gonna be shown three times during the Christmas holiday at different times, and just let people come and see it. Because that tells the story as best we can. And the, and then we can summarize that and send it out to people and so forth and so on. But it's better if they see the graphics and have somebody explain it to them. And I think it could be done at Christmas. I think it's helpful to be done at Christmas. I think the sooner the better. And obviously with the participation of the various entities, giving it validity and support. So I think it could be done at Christmas. And because if it's, if it's basically this, and you're showing it, and it's a free showing to anybody, and you encourage people to come and see what what is being thought about for the future of the Corps in Waterlo Valley, great opportunity. I don't, I don't think it's, I think it's easy to do. You know, it's all there. All you gotta do is plug it in. He did it today. You know, the, it's all there. All you got to do is plug it in. He did it today. Shows how long it takes, you know, 10 minutes to set it up. All you got to do is invite people. I think it's worthwhile thinking about.
But somebody would have to be there and present this and somebody.
Hey, Willie, you can be around.
What I'm saying is that this is, it's not a canned program that you can plug in like a DVD and monitor and have somebody narrate it. Somebody would have to present it, right?
Yeah, truly, yes.
Okay.
Bill can do it and Bill, Bill, Bill has done it for the, if Claire was there. But I don't think it's necessary that Claire is there. Bill can run through it and, and answer questions and so forth. But I think it's very important that the, that the governmental entities and the, and the commercial partners in this thing are represented so that it's a cohesive level of support that is behind it.
I think, I think a part of this, I said it before, I guess, that, um, if this just got put on and people could see it, I mean, when I went to the workshop and I was listening to it, it was a good, I liked the concept. But my first reaction was, you know, this is the second time around for me.
I don't, I'm not sure, I, I heard what you said.
Well, there was a guy, a guy, you had a meeting one time, the guy from Telluride came and you put on a presentation at the conference center, yes?
No.
Somebody did.
No, you did.
Yeah, you did.
We did? Yeah, well, sorry about that.
Sorry, what I'm just saying, but a lot of people came away from that with, well, this is never going to happen. I think the major.
They were clearly right.
No, no, I know that, but that's why I think the major push now for people to understand it, we're serious is that we are getting behind this as a partner.
Yeah.
That's a bigger message than looking at the picture of what it might be. I think for them to take it seriously this time around.
Obviously, since I don't know anything about the previous one, I can't, I can't comment. I didn't think there was one, but clearly there was, so. But this is through and this, I, Bill and I will talk about what they got from Telluride. Anyway, for what it's worth.
I don't have any problem presenting the picture. You also got to present at the same time a picture of what the mountain looks like. Because people are more interested in that frankly than they are in the development downtown.
Yep.
And we've all said that you can't, you can't, you can't, this can't stand on its own. If there isn't some substantial investment also in the ski mountain that's going to occur over some timeframe that's kind of coordinated, it's all got to go off together. So, you know, somehow you got to put out a picture of the whole thing. You know, if we could get there by the, you know, the first week of, you know, in two weeks, maybe.
I mean, that, if I could, that's just in a, putting forth, you know, our green, the Green Peak expansion. And we can, that's easy to forget all that. That, we've done that presentation a hundred times. I think all the pieces are here. I mean, it's just, let's, you know, put them all together. And again, and just to reiterate what we were saying, the difference between 10 years ago, we're not sure what that was, now is to have all three of us standing on that stage together of where, you know, supporting. That's, that's the drive. I mean, was Booth Creek there? The old presentation? I imagine not.
I think that was prior to Booth Creek.
Seventeen, eighteen years ago.
Wow, it was a while ago.
Well, Booth Creek wasn't going to be anywhere near a presentation like that. They couldn't care less about it. You know?
You know, we're quick, you know, we also have Martin Luther King weekend and February vacation. All that happens before, before town meeting and while, and I think if we put together this little committee bill to figure out how to happen, you know, we'll pick out a date. It's important that when it's done, it's pretty well thought out. And I'm going to do a big job with it. And this presentation's a big part of it, the stuff that Chris has done at the mountain's a big part of it. The town support of a, of a, of a long-term development plan is absolutely critical. So all, all the pieces are there. How to implement, um, educating and informing our visitors and our property owners and our residents is really key.
Yeah, Christmas is really quick. I know I have to count myself out from being involved at all, but if we looked at, you know, Martin Luther King weekend, but it depends on, on who's willing to step up and run the ball, I guess.
I, I don't think it's something that's going to happen. I mean, I think that in, in one, in one session. I think that, I think that there needs to be a presentation and then we need to build on it. And, and, and maybe it's, maybe it's Christmas and Martin Luther King and February vacation. I, you know, I just think that it's too big, it's too big a thing for us to think that we can, okay, present it at Christmas and then at town meeting. I mean, I just think it's, it's something we have to work at and build and show over and over and over again that we're all in this together and we all want this to happen. And it's, it's, it's all that's happening at the mountain, it's what's happening in town. You know, I mean, I just think it's, it's not something we can do in one shot. I think that, I think there has to be a, a process to it. And we have to be on board with that process, that whole process.
And I think it's going to. We want to include as many people as possible and it's going to take more than a presentation.
It is. And I think it'll start building the energy in the townspeople. And when I say townspeople, I mean property owners, no matter whether you're a voting resident or you're an owner here. The buzz will start and I think we need to ride that buzz. Keep reinforcing it.
So many, can point somebody going to play a board? Work on this? Who would, has some energy to do this?
Just want one person, right?
I think so. One for the, I think was a good suggestion, one for the playing board, we'll get one from the board of selection.
I'm not certain if they wanted to do it unless anybody feels strongly that they'd like to do it. Even though we have one person, other people would be invited if they want.
Right. We've got some board of selection meetings next week. We could probably come up with a name. Like Wednesday.
Does anybody want to do this?
I think, I'm happy to help on it, but I think that you are the chair and I think that it would be great to have. I don't mind helping either.
Bill, we'll, we'll come up with a name from the, from next Wednesday and we'll, we'll be in touch.
And I'm available anytime.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And we really look forward to a partnership of all three parties and trying to move things ahead. Exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, for coming down and sharing.
Thank you.
Tom, it's always nice to see you.
Thank you.
I'm going to run this subject. The transportation option. It's going to tie in very closely with this. And I had some thoughts behind the discussion. Last, last year at Everly, the name of our proposal, right, was a transportation study.
We may come up with a better name.
That's my thought.
That's just what I was going to say. Sitting there right in my mouth because it just doesn't sound.
Transportation just sounds like crosses or something.
Yeah.
It's much more efficient than that.
Right.
Has the committee kept that around? I mean, we all know exactly what we're trying to do here.
I think we've kicked it around now as for a, a name for the committee.
Well, you know, I, I think if we can, if we can get the idea out, you know, where is ground zero? I mean, in the real world, we're at the stage trying to do enough work to attract someone who's got hundreds of millions of dollars.
Right.
Who wants to. So we can just call it that. It's phase one, it's phase zero concept development. I mean, it's, you know, we're, you know, to get us enough work done, be able to convince somebody that we're serious enough.
Yeah, we don't have so much talent.
You know, that, that's the trick. Find somebody who has a hundred million. The rest, the rest is just merely engineering.
Right.
Phase one is core development.
Yeah, I, you know, it's the phase, you know, phase one or phase zero or something for development plan.
Yeah, I'd be able to just core.
Well, call it.
Be anything to a bunch of people.
No, and, and that's what I'm saying, we have to get that out. And you need to, you've got to have something that's going to hold the mountain involved too. Now, we're going to have to be specific about what are the questions that need to be answered. And I think we have a pretty good list. You know, is, how, how, is that part, you know, it's a couple of really key questions. Could, you know, parking structures aren't going to be cheap. I mean, this ain't New York City where we're charging, you know, $32 a night for parking cars a night. You know, where, how does that work when it's a pit lane? And then likewise the condo. How do you recoup $8 million bucks or something? Whatever. A lot of money. But, right, you know, other people's does, you know, and this one does. Right. I think some of the key things that maybe go in your title are some of the things that we know people consider pedestrianization and parking are two things that keep coming up over and over again.
Right.
And if you include that, transportation, parking, pedestrianization, you need to give it a little.
Yeah, agreed. Rather than just transportation. That pedestrianization is as.
Town revitalization.
Town revitalization, town.
I mean, we aren't talking about the parking on a, you know, what Britain wasted.
What's it?
Well, they were dying scary. I don't know who, figure it out, get somebody to invest a couple hundred million dollars, but that's what happened.
So it's kind of like surface systems revitalization.
Can't be too complicated.
Yeah, maybe it's not, yeah.
I think the new committee ought to come up with a name.
Right.
Yeah, good idea, pass the buck.
Yeah, but phase one revitalization.
Yeah, yeah, that's good to me.
Because, I mean, it's not going to stand alone just on its title.
But it's amazing how it was failed based on this title.
That sounds like we can. Next thing on the agenda is zoning changes. This would be the last meeting that we have any proposed zoning changes for the March meeting. No, I don't.
Do we have zoning changes that would be important to have at the town meeting to support this whole thing? I mean, that's the.
Well, we've got to study.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to wait two hours.
Right, right.
Well, but we could look at the two, I mean, the open space, I don't know if there's a bigger issue, but the parking, you know, not with 300 feet because we're not doing them anyway. And, I mean, the size of the space, if it gets together, do we look at those?
I, I think, I think you need to wait for the study. I mean, they're going to have, they might be a lot more involved in it, in my opinion.
Yeah, I think so, too. Then we don't have an application. We don't really anticipate an application. I don't think the zone is really restricting any of this.
I don't think so. I, I think if somebody wanted to come in the proposal to make parking spaces a little bit smaller than what the regulations call, I believe we have in our own regulations, we really do consider those.
Discretion.
Absolutely. I think there's some discretion still left, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't see anything in the regulations that would prevent them from this.
Right, and worse, you'd have to go to the ZBA or something, right?
Yeah, worse. I think it's critical to get, to get the parking, the transportation study, get the results.
I've been talking to a few people about parking because it just keeps coming over and over again. So I talked to some fellow town managers and planners and there are a lot of towns that do not have the level of parking in their zoning ordinances that we have. So all of the regulations, a lot of the regulations in the zoning ordinances are part of the site plan review or subdivision regulations in other towns. So I would, I would say, let's do the study and then see if we can't pull some parts out of zoning so that you have a little more flexibility because with the planning board being able to make changes to the site plan review and subdivision rights, it may be better to have some of, a lot of the detail, like the chart that we have in our zoning ordinance, instead of having that, a town vote and a two-thirds town vote, maybe it's something that you want to have the flexibility in regulations that you control. But, but do that as part of the RFP process and part of the transportation study. So just leave it and we'll come back to it in 15 and, and make the appropriate changes. Because I think you solve a lot of the issues here.
Yeah, I, I, you know, in, in that light, I think there are a whole host of things that are in the zoning that you wonder why in the world did they ever get into zoning regulations to begin with? Because those are force of, those are force of law. I mean, you know, where the others are, you know, you got some more flexibility around, going around them and rolling.
Yeah, I looked at our zoning regulations and a lot of the other things. For instance, signs, I thought, you know, signs could.
Yeah, why is signs in the zoning?
But then people don't come to the planning board for a site plan review for signs, so they could.
Well, they would have to. Well, then maybe they would have to. I mean, if you wrote them in there.
I, I don't know. That, that is a possibility. But there's a lot of technical things, the lighting, the, the signs, the parking. There's a lot of very specific stuff that's, that you find in other regulations in other towns rather than in the actual zoning ordinance.
Aren't, aren't those regulations in the zone good for the enforcement officer and the building inspector?
Absolutely. Like Bill said, they have the force of law and, but you can have them in the zoning ordinance to get that enforcement piece without having every technical detail of how many feet a parking space has to be, the dimensions and, you know, some of the, the more technical stuff you may be able to word so that you still have the review in the zoning ordinance or the force of law in the zoning ordinance, but then refer back to the site plan rights.
Yeah, I guess my thought, where anything to do with parking would certainly come before the planning board. But lighting necessarily comes before the planning board, signs would come, so.
Well, they don't the way we're currently structured, doesn't mean that it doesn't.
Right, okay, that would be.
I mean, it's a planning, we're kind of caught between the board of selection and the planning board.
Because building inspector, according to issues of building firm, I guess, they have something to back up.
Right.
Bill?
Yeah, I, some, some of that flexibility is good, but I can, from a developer's point of view, coming in and knowing what the hard and fast regulations are, is, is really important because someone says, if I do this, I can expect to receive an approval. As you move stuff from zoning into stuff that, that you can change in subdivision, how you feel, then there's less assurance on a developer's point of view that they come in, well, if the planning board agrees with this or does this, or does this, or does this, or does this.
planning board agrees with this, or does this, or does this, or does this, or does this, then I can expect to get approval. Developers typically would rather see more absolute regulations than, than those gray areas, so, but before you do that, some of that stuff that March, might be, for some things, might be good, but a lot of that stuff, put it in there, make it as good as you can, and, and, you know, the reason why you have a ZBA, if the ZBA recognizes this function, is it's not perfect, and you can go for variances, they're very difficult to get, but your ZBA is the, is the, is the relief valve for when things aren't right, and, you know, so there's an interesting mix of those three, three things there, and you need to look at those carefully as you make those, as you make those changes.
So as a developer, you're going to keep where they are in the zoning?
Well, the, the things that we wrestle with now are in the, are the gray areas, you know, that are not, are not well-defined, and it's not that, and those are zoning issues. Relative to zoning changes, you know, two things that if, that you might consider, one is changing the three hundred foot radius for parking, that's not being provided now, the other thing, I don't know if you want to discuss it now, you brought it up at one point, Ray, is, do you want to include parking spaces in garages?
Tried to get consensus of that from the planning board before, and really didn't succeed in that. I think we have to wait for this transportation study, and then we will have some concise recommendations, and we can do it all at once. You know, we've had zoning changes for the last several years, every year, and, I don't know, I guess my feeling is, it might be just premature, take two things like that and change them, that we might change again next year, and, as I say, I don't think, I don't see anything that, in the regular regulations now, that would hinder this development, this core development.
Well, there are other developments going on that have not come, have not come back to see you.
No, I know. I prefer to wait for the study before we make any changes.
That's perfectly reasonable.
So I guess we can go forward this year with no zoning changes?
Well, there's nothing wrong with that.
No. Any new business? Communications, I sent out the, I think I sent out an article that was in the town and city report, it seemed pretty timely about the conditional approvals, I think everyone received that, and Terry, Terry said it was homework, I hope that, I hope that conditional approval article cleared everything up for the future, I think it was a good learning opportunity, I was somewhat surprised at doing so much confusion about conditional approvals.
Well, you know, I didn't, I realized it was, I had to laugh here, this morning, kept drawing that word out, conditionally, we had a motion, we conditionally approved it, and essentially, it's saying the same thing, until you satisfy the condition, you can't do anything.
Yeah, we have to make sure that Chris knows.
Right, then if somebody's allowed to do something, you know, we need to spell that out, you know, we often say, you are allowed to do this, even though this is a condition.
And the building inspector has to realize that we can't issue building permits and go telephone for signs, so, that was a good one. Committee reports? Again, I want to thank all the committees that did a wonderful job, put in a lot of hours. Religion before?
We have an deference to the chair, go Army Navy.
Go Army Navy game Saturday.
Okay. Have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Have a second?